I call to order the Board of Trustees meeting on Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, when the time is 6 o'clock. Ethics, principles, and parliamentary procedures. This meeting is for the purpose of conducting the business of the township. Observance of the basic rules of debate in any meeting will enhance its effectiveness through ensuring the discussion is orderly, that every member has the opportunity to speak with wishes of the majority prevailing. There will be no personal attacks. A respectful attitude toward the public, employees, colleagues will be maintained. The latest version of the Roberts Rule of Order will be followed. Trustee Johnson, would you like to give your application?
Yes. Would you like to stand up? All right. Gerald, thank you for this beautiful day in Etna Township. Thank you for allowing us to have a free place to come and voice our opinion to run our own government. Pleased with those who keep us safe, keep us, give us those freedoms. The men and police, also the fire people that are out there on the front lines every day. Great to be with those families as they miss those people that are here today. Amen.
Will we please with a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Here.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include the following. Add a discussion of the park lot splits and transfers after I got a call from Gary Snyder today, very concerning call. Add a resolution adding Juneteenth to employee handbook recognizing the holidays apply with O R C. Just get that one. Food truck approval at the park for discussion after additional resident contact was made. Discussion on update on development discussion since there's been none shared with the board. Discussion on the Reynoldsburg annexation inquiry since there's been no update on that either to the board and a discussion on live streaming and archiving the meetings. Is the President going to call for a second?
Right, so now. Is there a second? Roll call.
Mr. Evans?
What?
Roll call, we need a second.
There's no seconds, the discussion's over.
It's discussed.
On the first one. So go right into roll call.
I don't know, I thought she was passing it out.
There was, there was no.
There's no second.
So that, so that, so we're back into the most of discussion. Again, the agenda items are inadequate because they're not addressing the needs as I indicated there are many. The agenda is driven by one person only and that's improper.
Madam President, whatever appropriate.
Yes, sir.
I think to have educated discussion if trustee Evans would like to have specifics added to the agenda, if he could provide us supplementary information, documentation, things that we could read to establish a position on some of his concerns, it would be helpful.
It has been done, Mr. Vance.
Okay, I am not familiar, I'm not familiar with any documents being provided associated with the things that you wanted to add to the agenda for review, for investigation. So I would say that such opportunities are welcome, but if we get a barrage of new items to consider without any supporting information, any educational materials, I don't know the value of discussion at this point in time.
This was provided to the board members with information and why we need to discuss it. As I indicated previously, no information or communication is being shared with me from anyone. So this is required to have a discussion in these meetings. It's illegal to discuss this between trustees outside these meetings. So we must have these discussions.
Okay, well, I don't know what, I don't know what information you're talking about because these meetings provide public updates every two weeks as to what's being worked on and I would welcome that information right there so that I can discuss it individually with the other trustees and we can incorporate it into a near future agenda.
The board received it and was ignored.
Well, nobody seen.
That's my discussion.
Okay, all right, well, I disagree.
Roll call.
Is someone seconding the agenda?
They seconded it.
You excited, Gary?
Social Medicine, back.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
I move to approve the minutes from April 5th, April 19th, and April 28th. I'm sorry. April 28th as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Vaschel? I received these four hours ago. These are very lengthy and as I indicated, I have not had an opportunity to review these except on the 28th or 6/29. I believe the other two should be tabled until they can be reviewed. I'm not sure if you two have thoroughly reviewed these. Providing these four hours before meeting, I think is inappropriate. So I haven't had an opportunity to review April 5th or April 19th. And they are lengthy.
Roll call. Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Please come up to the podium and state your name, address, for the record.
Alicia Zachle Cameron, Trails. On Monday, June 20th, at 1:14, Mr. Evans posted seven itemized things that were only partially true. I'm not going to cover all seven, but the first one regarding Juneteenth. He posted that he and the fiscal officer asked the prosecutor to draft a resolution allowing the employees to get paid. He posted that Ms. McKee directed him not to, and that was inappropriate. I think it was inappropriate to go to the prosecutor's office without talking to the President or emailing him. I also think that the President, as a black woman, would know what Juneteenth is about. Whatever decisions are made, it is the law. I'm sure they're going to be paid regardless. I mean, it's all half-truths, everything that's posted and it's ridiculous. I mean, and I'd like to know where is the picture of where it was in the dispatch where the Christian coffee place and John Carlyle had up here? That's gone. I'd like to see what happened to that. And then I'd like to find out, Mr. Evans says that it's inappropriate for the trustees and that they're supposed to be equal, but I don't see equality in the things that he does. And when he posts stuff speaking about a black woman, he says, you know, I just don't understand why you would even say such a thing. It's absolutely, you're unastonished that, speaking of a black woman, that you posted a picture of yourself with Rhonda Loomis who posed as a black woman on Facebook. This is who you chose to swear you in? It's unprofessional.
Ma'am President, I thought there was supposed to be no personal attack.
That's not a personal attack, that is absolute fact. You did. This is who you chose to swear in. You attacked Mr. Kennar, who's been a resident out here for 25 years and owns 100 acres. The man pays taxes every year, yet you talk to all the people and all your minions that don't even live in Etna or pay taxes in Etna, and you don't even respect his opinion regardless of whether it doesn't agree with yours. And I'd like to know why we can't have fireworks because some kid might choke on a hot dog, yet we can have Food Truck Friday and they might choke on the same hot dog except we would be liable. Those are a few things I'd like to see if the trustees could recognize. He stated they would choke on a hot dog. Give me a break. That's it.
Three, seven, four, shock. 484 Trail Rust and trustee 4928 Summit Road. Moved to Summit Road in 1970, Lake of Hills had flooded back there. It was, I've talked to the people who were the original owners and their children, I went to school with their children. When Mr. Andre developed the plan, it's been flooding since then. They've never done anything back then. To me, it should be the residents that take care of their own problem, that they knew of when the plan was developed. The other thing about the holiday pay, if they are not getting paid holiday pay, I hope the employees go to the Labor Relations Board. That is a federal holiday, so, and that would again, if you didn't pay them, you may be liable for fines because of that. The other thing, the consultant says he works with the board, that all communication between board members should be with all three board members, not just one or the, or two, but all three. If it works with the board and you're saying the board is all three members, then all three members should be there so everyone knows what's going on because this lack of communication is dividing the community. As far as growth, you know, we're at 90% storage capacity, you know, we're talking about more growth and more growth. I want them to pay for the new sewage if we're going to grow. They need, I mean, I've been paying for the debt reduction for all these years. They, any new construction needs to also pay for the new sewage plant. That needs to be added to their bills over time so that they are paying for that along with future water development because either at the township, we keep paying and we keep paying and we keep paying and it's very expensive here compared to City of Columbus. I mean, I pay one month here what I paid three months in Columbus. Or actually, I paid less than that when I lived here. The other thing is respect what the people's wishes are. The people of Etna Township have already said what type of development they want. We have the comprehensive plan. We've had the referendum that has said what we want and what we don't want. We need to look at what Etna Township wants, residents, not the trustees and not certain business. Thank you.
Okay, three minutes. You're welcome. Are there any other comments, public comments? Go ahead, go ahead. I'll be quick.
Hi, green and black, 13398 Palmer Road. I noticed in your agenda that you're proposing a harassment policy. I just wanted to comment on that, having the past experience in crafting such things. Be careful. It can become a very slippery slope to the extent, this is what I've been had experienced in the past. If somebody complains, it can be construed as harassment. If a township, resident complains more than once, it's considered harassment. Things like that, it can become a slippery slope. So use good language in crafting to make sure you're not creating something that later you'll regret. And I always speak to that because of the past experience with it. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your support.
How long, Trail? I just had a question, Ms. Marion, back in April, you said you were going to send me hard information as to how we can get that mail out. I was wondering where you sent that?
Look.
Okay. Because you said that, you said that it was more than two months ago.
What, our, the, and the issue?
How the township was paying for all enforcement under our laws. Under what?
Yeah, but there was a whole resolution to that. I think it's.
Yeah. And the other thing is I just had a question regards to the development that's going on down here that Mr. Evans was talking about before with the density and stuff like that. Aren't we going to actually end up putting more people into our schools because of that? Because since the resolution passed, making the wire density now, didn't you say that before?
With the NCA?
When you talked about before, you said with the resolution, or I'm sorry to interrupt my project, that we'd be able to get more, less density, but now we're actually going to end up with more density, right? Because now people are annexing the task load of Reynoldsburg, right?
The task load's not annexing, I think there's a threat from Reynoldsburg that we can defend it if the board will allow our attorney to. And it's just inquiries. If the board follows the zoning, it's less, quite a bit less density than what was passed and that we succeeded on.
Madam President, if appropriate, citizens' comments are for citizens' comments and if trustees would like to respond, the best time, it would be my recommendation to do it during the trustee comments.
If the citizen wants to reply now, he should be afforded that opportunity, not at the work session in three hours.
Mr. Allen?
This is what, so report?
Okay.
All right. Sorry.
Gary Burbow, 254 Trail East. Since Mr. Vance opened the door regarding events on all outstanding issues every two weeks, I guess I'd like an update sometime on the Pike Street project. I think there's still a lot of unanswered questions on that. The presentation of the last meeting was simply a cross-section. We don't have any rendering. Any some good questions were raised at that meeting that never did get answered. For example, what is, and I've looked at some of the draft drawings, but still not sure what the tie-in is on 40 going out east, what that tie-in's going to look like. Would like to see what the preliminary cost estimates are at this time for that road. I realize that going out east, the road definitely needs to be at least paved, but given some of those cost estimates, eyes of the resident have concerns where that sets on the priority list. And another issue has to do with the High Point Development since it's my understanding that that is going to access off of Pike Street. Are they contributing to the project? And I, and I think there's a lot more information that the residents, the community would like to know about taxing, about financing, how are those monies being split? How much comes to the township? How much is being pushed over to the developer? And again, I haven't done a detailed engineering analysis, I'm not an engineer. I have questions about who's going to maintain the fence in the High Point Development, who's going to maintain the ponds and, and so I think there's still a lot of questions and I would appreciate it if the board could give us an update on that, if not today, at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burbow.
First of all, I would like to thank whoever worked on my smoke road over there. It's wonderful. We do all go bounce like on a hoarder. So I thank whoever took care of that. And also, we were, I mentioned maybe months ago about the, they're on smoke road, we have culverts. They're not in the ground, they're at this high and our fields are flooded. And the farmers farming our farm talked to somebody on the road crew and they says, oh, we've never had trouble with Harleys because they farm it. That's not true. I own the farm. I know what the water rules are. We've got them everywhere because of the culverts. So I'm asking if that can be addressed again because I pay a lot of taxes, and you know, farmers don't make a lot of money. So I do ask that you check that out because our farmer can't farm probably, I don't know, eighth of that farm because of the culverts. So I appreciate that. Thank you. And thank you for fixing that, babe.
You're welcome. And Lake County's low on water, it's been addressing that with me and several other places.
But they were told if they ran that colony, told by somebody on the revenue, it's just not there. Thank you.
I just had a question. Been coming to the meetings and seemed like after the first year, we haven't had a financial report. We've always, during the township meeting, we've always had a, you know, a report on expenditures and the balance that's in the treasury. And I don't know if we've ever had that since the first year, so that was just a question.
I haven't.
But it used to be in public, you know. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I just was curious because I requested information on the attorney deal with the piece that we have at that time. I didn't know if there was a way for you guys to give more details. I know it's an attorney-client privilege. I didn't know if it was able to be waived in any way so it's more transparent to the people requesting it at this point. That's all, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ashley. We have the public comments. Roll call to the financial report. I move the resolution 2206, 2101 to be included, the first forms as presented.
All second.
Roll call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
I move to pay the bills as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Where are the bills?
There you go.
You're going to share them?
Yeah, I brought them, so I remember looking at them any time I'm on the military.
I wasn't made aware of that.
Madam President, if appropriate?
Yes, sir.
Just an idea, I don't know if it's routine practice or not, I've been familiar with situations in the past where on a monthly basis, there would be a list of bills that the trustees could actually individually look at, know that were proposed to be paid and then they could endorse all the bills or ask for additional information as necessary, et cetera. Just food for thought.
Did you sign this? Yes. I should give.
Yeah.
Did you sign?
No, no, Ted. That's fine.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to all business.
Wait, can we get to the, sorry, my report?
Oh, yeah. You want your report?
Are we saying, okay, this is, yeah, which one you? Well, I, it's just the top one. The much away fiscal officer report, apparently. My report is at 531 because that's what everything is reconciled through. 531, we've had revenue of 1.3 million, expenses of 761,000, and we have an ending cash balance of 4.4 million. I've worked on several things in the last five months. I finalized the 2021 changes with the Office of Budget Management. I've reported our funds. I've updated the five-year forecast on things as they change. I prepared the tentative budget for 2023. There have been a couple more issues that have come to light. So I've been trying to figure out and I've talked with several people about what to do with the West Leaning Development Group. This is a nonprofit corporation that was formed by the three prior trustees in 2015 and the goal was to support community improvements and economic development and Prologis contributed $250,000 for the 310 improvements and that in Township has made a couple of $10,000 contributions. This corporation was canceled by the Secretary of State in 2017. The Auditor of State is now sending a slate notice email due to the handle notes not being filed for 2021 and the financial reports are due at 6:30 or on June 30th this month. It is likely that the Board of Directors for that corporation's term months have expired and I have no official capacity to do things for this corporation and now there's $100,000 left dormant in that account. I would also like to address the legal bills that came to light in the New York Advocate a couple of weeks ago. So year-to-date, we do have $134,000 of legal expenses on the books. However, much of that will be invoiced back to the JED boards. I estimate that amount for just 22 alone, up to $50,000. I would also like to point out that of the $134,000 on the books this year, 8,800 was from the prior year. This would leave about $58,000 for general matters for year-to-date and to compare this to last year at 531 in 2021, the legal bills were at 127,000. I think that's all I have for right now.
I did have one question on, I was looking at your spreadsheets on the legal bills. So Mr. Vance brought the concern up last time about the $100,000 in the NCA legal fees. On your spreadsheet, just wanted to confirm that $99,942 was from 2020 and 2021, the previous board. And the current year, trying to wrap that up, was only $11,291. So that was the prior board and they're delaying the creation and even that $11,000 this year, there was a lot of difficulty with the statutory developer, the developer, in trying to improperly have an organizational meeting and that so that increased the bill. And I am concerned that we didn't have the attorney here at the last meeting like I had requested before the control was taken over for me, that there's going to be a private meeting with Ms. McKee and Mr. Vance at $590 an hour without just coming to the board and discussing it as a board. I'm not sure why there has to be a private meeting to discuss this and rack up even more fees for this. So I would, I would suggest that we dispense with the private meetings and just have a meeting with the board. That's it.
And if appropriate, Madam President, I have a question. For the fiscal officer, is there any kind of update on the American Rescue Plan money? Do we expect the second tranche?
That'll be in July or August that we receive that.
How much is that?
$465,000.
400?
And 65,000.
That's good. Okay, that's all I have, Madam President.
I think that's it. The only other thing I'd like to point out is the expenses year-to-date as of 531, we are only using about 30 to 40% in most cases of our reserve balances. So we're well under budget here-to-date.
Did you have any comment on paying the employees for Juneteenth? Probably can't do that. The Oregon Act.
Well, I contacted the prosecutor this weekend, asked him to prepare a draft resolution that I could bring to the meeting today in order to see exactly how I'm supposed to pay the employees on Friday for Juneteenth, which was yesterday. But I was overruled by Mrs. McKee about with him and he was told that I, that I wanted to wait until the board could decide what to do and how to move forward. There is an Ohio revised code that says I have every There is an Ohio Revised Code that says I have every bit of access to the prosecutor for my own office, the fiscal office that stands alone from the trustees. So I'm surprised at his reaction to not even wanting to give me a draft. If I followed the Ohio Revised Code, I have every right to pay them double pay for my day's work. They decided on their own to work that day. It basically moves the decision up to me. Do I want to follow the Ohio Revised Code, or do I want to go with the employee? Without a resolution, they have to be paid.
How will we respond to that? Just so you know, we're in the middle of a contract, okay? And all those employees that you're refunding to, we're in the middle of a contract negotiation. When you're in a contract negotiation, you do not increase nor do you decrease. You will pay them for their day of work. We're not refusing to pay them. They will be paid.
Has that contract been finalized?
That's why you don't do anything. That's why you don't do anything. It is a contract. This is a contract. You cannot, I know union contracts. I was in a union for 20 years and a representative. You cannot change anything because you will be subject to a lawsuit.
Either way, we will be.
Ms. McKee, didn't we raise employees' salaries during their evaluation? These are the same ways.
No, 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 no. You hired them under the wages.
No, no, we raised.
No, no, you, you did not wage it.
Don Colley's.
No, that's, Don Colley's already, he's not, wait a minute.
We, he's Don Colley's.
That's different. Don Colley does not fall under that six months. He does not fall under the Ohio Revised Code.
It doesn't make sense to be said.
Yes, it does make sense.
And my whole work attorney said to do it.
Mr. Colley will be paid. No, he did not.
Madam President.
He did not realize that we were in a contract negotiation. And I provided you, I provided, well, when you guys called the Mark Paul T. or the prosecutor, he did not even realize that. That's why he wouldn't draw up that resolution. I provided you from our attorneys on your desk there, every one of us has it there at our desk, where it shows that we will not change anything in regards to our employees' authorization. I mean, it's been on a contract right now.
And we have two employees that are not subject, they're not.
We're not talking about those employees. They weren't, they weren't subject to the matter. They weren't having a problem. This is for the.
They're subject to ORC.
Madam President, in an effort to stand on point with the agenda tonight, the way we discussed the Juneteenth Day on Friday prior to its occurrence was it is a recognized holiday by the state of Ohio, so it's treated like every other holiday in the state of Ohio. And the fiscal officer is absolutely correct. She has every right, and we have the expectation that she's going to pay employees for working holidays or working that holiday as they should be paid. So we, you know, we had no doubt last week that the fiscal officer was going to honor what the township needs to do as far as employees' pay on Juneteenth.
Well, Ms. McKee is stating that you can't change their pay. You can't.
No, once again, it's.
Without changing payment.
It's an Ohio Revised Code that recognizes Juneteenth as a holiday, and so they are due eight hours regular pay and eight hours holiday pay. And in our expectation is the fiscal officer will do so in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code.
Change our employee handle to comply with.
We can come back and do that later.
Wait, hold on, let's move on.
Okay.
They will be paid. Thank you. Okay, all business. Mr. Vance, I'll turn the meeting over to you and Mr. Singleton, or the SCNL FedEx and 5952.
We had a, we had a good meeting with Dan Harrington. I guess it's probably been about three weeks ago. He followed up with an email and indicated that SCNL was receptive to additional stormwater improvements. They were receptive to investigating what it would take to raise the wall, the cost associated with doing so. And since that point in time, we have yet to receive another email with a second round of specifics to report upon tonight. I anticipate having something before July 5th.
So there's really no update, except there's been no communication, no front communication that directed?
I just gave the update.
So it's the same information?
Let's move on.
Yes.
I'm, Ms. McKee, I'm trying to have a discussion, please.
Public hearing for the tax amendment, Article 18, Plan Residential Conservation District, this protocol, June, June 22. I'm going to try and move it over to Mr. Singleton, or not, but I'll look at the commission for the implementation of that.
Yes, question as of the last meeting was in regards to Section K of PRCD. I did speak to planning commission staff, and they do recommend deleting that out of the zoning resolution because it is not our authority to acquire or not acquire interconnectivity. That's their authority. It doesn't have to be done right now. There's a supersede to our zoning resolution in that aspect, and we're in the process of doing some other things with that at this point. So we're back to the recommendation of the zoning commission. And your pleasure, Stag, you would like to vote on that tonight.
Any questions from the board?
So you're stating that you recommend following their recommendation to delete the interconnectivity from Section K, correct? Because that's what they recommended.
That's not part of this resolution, no. That has to be done separately. That's not part of what was advertised by here. That'll come at a later time. Right now, there are several other things that the zoning commission are working on, changes in the zoning resolution, plus we've got the complaint review going. We're going to have a lot of changes coming soon, and we can make the change at that point.
So you're saying that we can't modify their suggestions? Because that's one of the options, adopt, deny, or adopt with modifications, so we can't just remove it now?
That was not part of the submission.
It's part of the rededications and part of what the zoning commission discussed, wasn't that, or now?
That's not part of the submit, what was submitted to that. We can only act on what was advertised and heard. That has to be a separate hearing to do that.
All right, thank you.
Just to help you out, the resolution and the attachment, that is the way you guys sent it to the zoning commission with the green. The one loose is how the zoning commission recommended it to you. So if you approve it the way the zoning commission recommended it to you, you're only going to change the green in 1804. If you approve it with modifications, this is how you originally sent it to them. The zoning commission is recommending to follow LCPC and not do anything in Section 1806.
Maybe I'm just confused because it's a doubt, which would be adopted with all the changes recommended.
Well, with the modifications, do that means you probably modify within the sections we were, the text we advertised for. And the zoning commission did not discuss LCPC recommendation to totally remove that section.
Okay, that's fine. They didn't discuss the, that's fair. So my feeling is that I think we should adopt Section 1804A and not modify Section 1806K.
So then you would be using this exhibit, and you're going to adopt it as recommended by the zoning commission?
Correct.
It was a little confusing because it didn't match what you guys originally submitted.
I move to Resolution 22062102 to adopt the recommendation from the zoning commission pertaining to request amended in the zoning resolution made article 18. I'm in residential conservation district, Section 1804. 180, yeah, 180.
Okay, as presented.
As presented in Exhibit A.
You need a second.
All right. I'll second, but Exhibit A that I have here on this, I should have a second.
Do you want to be in Exhibit A?
You want the one with the on top, or such as, signed by the zoning?
Okay, so not the one attached to the present?
No, that's still with Exhibit A. You want the one as presented.
Because she adopted, adopted it the way the zoning commission sent it to you.
All right.
Yeah, the way you originally sent it is they modified, so you're going to adopt it with the one of the loose.
With this, this. Is there a second?
He's second.
I second, all right. Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Trustee? I've moved to authorize expenditure of the T-Mobile for the $69 a month, which includes an additional $9 for the insurance, that comes $69, and there's a $35 activation fee. So the phone per month would be, for T-Mobile, would be $69, which would be including the insurance. Is there a second? I'll second. Now, unless you allow, Mr. Evans, do you call you on that phone? Absolutely.
Why can't you call and discuss? There's no, that's.
It's not about calling me for business. We, trustees do that, I can have conversations.
But not about business.
Not about business.
But have you looked at additional carriers?
Yes, I did. Yes, and that's a business phone line, so who want to add additional lines for yourself or trustee or some, a road supervisor? And the phone's free, so it was not charged for the phone. Phones are free.
Just going to say, I was at the West-looking Historical Society meeting, and they approved phone usage.
I had that same report.
They were going through Verizon, and they indicated it's $45 a month.
It was $50.
Okay, so it's $50 a month, free phone.
It wasn't unlimited.
Unlimited. They said unlimited, unlimited data. The strip, the hotspot was limited to 10K device, but that's $50, so.
It wasn't unlimited, Mark. I had before, I was at, I was a member of the historical society, and I was there like when they presented that.
I was there too, with them.
Yeah, well, so just to let you know, it's not unlimited. Cost of additional money once they reach that threshold, and they would be paying additional. I shopped around, that was the cheapest thing, it sounded like.
Do you have any points to share, or?
No, I don't. Roll call?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
I'm going to turn this meeting over to John Singleton. Mr. Singleton and Mr. Vance regarding the coyote pool of the township park property.
Yeah, about a month ago, around a month or so ago, we had complaints of coyotes in a building in the bridle section of the park property that we had recently purchased. Coyotes have pups. I call ODM, or ODNR, state that you can either have them trapped and disposed of, or if you just wait until June, they'll probably be gone. So we had gotten ahold of some extermination companies or some trapping companies to remove, get prices on removing coyotes. One company wanted to go out and take a look, it was about a week later. The coyotes were gone at that point. The, so at this point, it's not an issue. Their pups were apparently old enough, they left. However, it brings up another point, and that is the old barn that is sitting there, which is aging, it has holes in the roof, holes in the walls. We may want to look at getting cost on having that building razed, so we don't have this problem in the future.
And Madam President, we can put that on the next work session agenda if you have no objection.
We have John's report, let's see. When you get changed, we'll, I'll walk out there with you, look at it.
Okay.
I've got another question.
Oh, I have another question, I was going to.
I have an important, important work session. The Edna Township employees have elected officials, want to provide and protect the professional local government, working vital for Edna Township employees and elected officials. Therefore, I, the president of the Edna Township Board of Trustees, am requesting that the Edna Township harassment policy be considered for adoption for the Edna Township Board of Trustees for July 5th, 2022, which I have provided that to you to look over. Mr. Vance, do you have anything else you want to add to that?
No, ma'am.
Can I speak off this? I just want to make sure the one in this packet is the recent one from Ben, that, so you want to replace this one with the other session?
Okay. So this is the latest one here?
Correct, the one you sent out to Ben, you wanted, the one before is going to place to be called after the last one. If there's updates.
Right, and Ben is the labor attorney for the township.
Now, would this fall under your, under negotiations with the union that you can't change anything?
That's wages, this doesn't fall under wages. It's different. My intention is to meet with the president of Southwest Looking Water and Sewer District Board to promote the need to expedite availability.
Are we done talking about this, I guess?
Yeah, do you have something else to say, Mark?
No, I thought we were going to, maybe we're going to have a discussion about what's in here and.
Well, if you want to, we're work session, so if you want to comment on it, which you made a comment, can we work on this? I'll let you know, it's only under wages that is changed under the law, as far as the contracts.
Since you're presenting it, I mean, is there any, was there any portions that were, some deliberation about that maybe the attorney said could have been one way or the other, or things that were included that weren't?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I don't, well, the harassment policy is being put forward in concert with labor attorney for the township, who was also assisting us with the negotiations of the union contract. So everything is working hand in hand as far as, nothing basically contradicting anything associated with that process.
But you're not willing to share any kind of discussions of why it went this way, or the changes that were made, just like with the NCA, that, you know, maybe one person wanted this, one person wanted that.
Well, we're talking about the harassment policy right now. We did provide the harassment policy, a draft, to the township trustees this evening, if you have any specific comments associated with what is proposed. And if you have comments associated with that, they can be noted, and it's been communicated that the goal is to transition this harassment draft to the July 5th trustee agenda. That is the topic at hand.
I believe that's going to be added to the handbook, correct?
Yes, yes, that's correct. Yes, so we'll have a new handbook for the employees.
Is there an update on the new handbook?
We're still working on it.
Can you share drafts with that design?
These are, well, this is one of the drafts that goes in there.
Right, right.
So there's a lot of other things that, that we're working on with, and you'll get a copy of it.
But can you share those drafts? Because I had to come across the draft from May 5th. Again, no one agreed to have it shared with this board.
The reason why.
There's no reason that the draft should not be shared with the full board.
It's not that we're not sharing.
Madam President, statements are made, and there's no substantiation to those statements. We're working with the labor attorney on updating the employee manual. We're working with the labor attorney on the contract negotiations. When those documents get to a point where you can have an educated discussion after some time to review those documents, that process will continue forward, and we will have those discussions after everybody's had a chance to look at what's being proposed. You can't question what's being proposed before it's proposed.
I believe that the draft for May 5th should be shared with the full board, and our fiscal officer who deals with that and paying our employees and keeping track of stuff like that, she should be included. But we might have, I might have input on that May 5th draft. What seems to be occurring is you just want to bring a final product to the table.
That's not what we're doing.
Then at least share the drafts.
A final draft is a draft.
But the working drafts, should, the May 5th draft should have been shared with the full board.
My understanding from the labor attorney is it's not ready to put forward as a draft.
And this is?
It will be soon.
Input from many is better than input from.
When you get a draft, it's ready to be discussed and reviewed, averaged reviewed. When you get a draft, it's ready to be discussed and reviewed, averaged and reviewed.
The May 5th draft was pretty extensive.
I have no idea what you're talking about as far as the May 5th, because it is an unfinished effort. I'd welcome any information, as always. But I'm sorry, Madam President, we can continue.
My intention is to meet with the president of the Southwest Looking Water and Sewer District Board to promote the need for the availability of additional wastewater treatment capacity to the local government entities that receive the wastewater treatment services from the Southwest Looking Water and Sewer District. Mr. Vance, do you want to add any information onto that?
My understanding is that we have, obviously, the Edna representative to that board is supportive of additional wastewater treatment, and this is an opportunity for Edna Township, in my estimation, in support, to coordinate a regional effort to investigate ways to expedite the creation of additional wastewater treatment capacity and make it available to Southwest Looking.
I've been involved with Rob Platt, the Southwest Board School Board, in this, discussing the tips, the funding for this. You don't think it's more appropriate that I continue in that role? I've attended the Southwest Looking Water and Sewer meetings. I don't think I've ever seen you there. I'm invested in this, and what's that?
You said, I mean, go ahead.
I've been invested in this and had numerous meetings on this, and I'm very familiar with this. So is it something, another thing that you're taking? Controlled of?
I didn't say that I'm staying controlled, I just said I want to meet with it. I need to educate myself on some things, and I think that's important as a president.
So should I continue meeting with Rob Platt?
Yes, you can continue to be with him, absolutely. That's what you said.
I just want to clarify.
Yeah, you can continue to be with him. I will, is there any other comments, Mr. Johnson?
Yep.
I will continue to work with the township management consultant, Mr. Vance, and the staff, and the township development attorneys to verify the annual township development agreements, like the JED to JEDs and the NCA revenue streams, expenditures, and Edna Township legal bills reimbursement. So that's what I've been working on, and I will continue to work with that so we can handle it. Mr. Vance, do you have any comments?
We are getting close to having specifics for discussion. Those are public documents, available to anybody and everybody who wants to inspect those documents, and we are moving forward with our educational pursuits.
Now, regarding development, are you going to start apprising the board of what's going on with the various FedEx, and they're wanting to pilot the six-twenty-nines, what that process is? Again, I was involved with all those issues, and just been cut out.
Yeah, but if you were involved and you presented it to us, that you're involved.
Everything, every developer that I met with, I ensure that you two both knew about it, and they reached out to you, or you reached out to them. I try to keep you two involved and informed, and ever since you took over, there's been zero information about development. I had a resident ask about what's going on with development, and I had to say, I have no clue, because I'm being just pushed aside without any information on that. So I think you should share what developers you're meeting with, so we can talk, I can talk with them too. Is the board going to do that?
He's the president of the board since January, so you know him, and you're familiar with him, and I'm sure if you need to reach out, you've done that, correct?
I don't know who we were talking to, just like near Kirkersville, when, what's that, Red Rock approached me. I made sure you two knew about that, gave you the information. That is not being done now. Why?
Well, Madam President, if I may, the assumption is something is not being done, but you're not specific. We haven't met with any development interests that have made any specific requests of the township that we need to report back, so we have no new information to report. You're accusing us of not providing you information that we don't have. So that's, that's, I would like to say confusing, but.
There is contact, are there not meetings?
What, are there not? We have all kinds of different meetings. What meetings are you speaking of specifically?
What I'm saying is that the board should be apprised of any of the development discussion.
Right, every two weeks, the president of this board is telling you specifically what she's doing. Yes, we're going through the development agreements right now. We're taking a look at all the revenues that come in, verifying them, we're taking a look at the expenditures.
What's going on?
We're taking a look at the legal bills, we're going back to 2015, and we've yet to get the results of those efforts to provide you that information.
What about the Hagee property, former Hagee property?
The former Hagee property? We haven't had any meetings on that.
No discussions?
I don't know anything about the Hagee property. It hasn't come to my attention to discuss.
I just think it's got to be more explicit.
Well, when we have something to provide, we will absolutely provide it. I mean, we're providing the minutia of what we're doing, just telling you what we're getting ready to do before we do it. So I can't, I can't say we can be more transparent than that.
The Edna Township Board of Trustees are moving towards a creation of a township purchasing policy to adhere to by employees and elected officials. I would like to work with the fiscal officer, Julie, on this policy. Julie, I know we had presented you a lot, and you had some things to say, which is fine, but we were able to hear more in from our attorneys that we can look over, and it's now to have discussions, and how you want to work it, and if you think it's best way you should. Yes, sir.
Is there supposed to be our policy, or just the two other townships' policies?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Is it appropriate? We just put forward a couple documents for the fiscal officer to take a look at. We would welcome any and all examples that she would like to consider. Obviously, a purchasing policy cannot go forward if the fiscal officer of the township is not going to take a leadership role, so we look forward to ideally following fiscal officers' lead in this regard.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. So Julie, are you okay with that?
Absolutely, we can meet whenever you'd like.
Okay, okay, thank you. I'll turn the meeting over to Ms. Barry regarding the 2023 proposal budget.
Did you guys all have a chance to review the five-year budget forecast that I sent you? Did you have any additions for JEDs or?
I just have a question for the fiscal officer. This is basically just the foundation of the financial information associated with the township. It does not, obviously, preclude the need for the township to go through their annual budget process. This is just required information requested by the county, correct?
It's a preliminary budget that will be finalized in 2023.
Okay.
So we have to get the estimates as close as we can.
Okay, is there any flexibility to change the numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
Especially with income. I mean, I still change the income numbers now with revisions to the auditor. So if we find something else that's going to be a problem for sure, then I can recommend appropriations.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, I have a couple questions. So on payroll, which can kind of be a big change, is, right now I have it in there at two percent for pay increases, but currently we do ten to fifteen percent an hour for the employees. So I was just wondering if I should bump that up or leave it as is?
I'd say I think this year's increase was a little extraordinary, just with the labor market retention was a big part of when I was doing the review, because a lot of people were leaving, or not from here, but just in general, we want to retain them and just inflation that, so I don't see that as continuing for the following years, but I think two percent is maybe a little, I'd rather the budget was higher, and we don't need that.
That's fine.
Do you have any thoughts on the percentage of that?
Well.
I mean, it's an estimate, it's not.
Yeah, yeah, because I do, you know, we'll eventually end up in a contract, so that's one of the negotiations, is there wages?
It's all partial.
So we just need to make sure that, because I noticed you had a tab on the board that you, the union. Yes, yes.
But for other employees that aren't on the road crew?
Okay.
So I was just wanting to know, I should just bump it up for the sake of planning?
Madam President, the fiscal officer did point out that we do have flexibility associated with the numbers, so with everything going on with the economy, you might want to wait a little bit before you even come up with a preliminary position on 2023 salaries.
If anything, we would just be under budget if we.
I'd say at least bump it up to five percent. Two percent seems very low, and five percent is a little more reasonable. We don't need it.
Street threes.
Street threes? Three dollars or three?
Three percent. Three percent, that's, that's standard across most places that you do annual raises, or if you get a yearly raise, everybody usually takes three percent.
But we've done ten to fifteen percent in the past.
In the past one year.
Isn't just this year though, that we're doing?
So you, when you say the past year, you're talking about what we just did?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's unusual, like you said, because of the fact that people, we went around, we wanted to retain our people, and so that was what we did at hand, so. I agree with Mr. Johnson, that three percent of the threshold would be probably going to be covered for other purposes.
You mentioned twenty-five hundred dollars for something that you had agreed, but are there going to be changes to the wages and benefits for the union employees as they unionize? What changes will there be to the brokerage wages?
I can't, I can't discuss that.
Any potential new staff coming on, part or otherwise, that we know of?
I know there's tip revenue from the tips that were passed by the previous board. Some of them are twenty percent to Edna, some of them are twenty-five to ten percent they might go down to, so that would be additional revenue once that document occurs, but we're years out.
Capital, agile, like buildings, anything I don't know about improvement sites, machinery, equipment, furniture?
Parks might be the only thing we have significant cost, and that is still experiment in, the garage is all there, and they'll all read out what's over there, so we can't see any buildings except maybe some of the park.
One concern about the park, like, that I wanted to trust the dating, was I got that call from Gary Snyder, and he got a call, his attorney got a call from the county, saying that the lot split transfer is not going to occur on time, and he's talking about selling.
That's.
And so that, those bonds, that's a large part of that park purchase, so we might need to get ready for that. As he asked, and we addressed that today, and you wanted an update on it, so I'm just planning that the board's not going to discuss it.
No, that's not true. We can't discuss it, Mr. Snyder, but you have to know that.
Yeah, the lot splits on the final three parcels were submitted on Friday.
Is that?
We should have some more information back by the end of this week.
So you're saying it will be completed by the deadline?
Yeah, yes.
Because that's not what their attorney got called from the county.
Again, so you're saying, I know where the forms are, I know where everything's at with the county, everything was submitted on Friday, and we should have some more information and additional information on exactly what's going on by the end of the week.
Because we're pushing really close to that deadline.
Well, our absolute.
It's a financial hardship, he said, and too, so the sooner we can do it, the better.
Okay, and our absolute commitment is to make that deadline.
When is the deadline?
The end of this month? Thirty?
So that's something I could give the year into the budget for next year, funds-wise. What happened this year with that, if you're concerned?
I think it's about nine hundred thousand, if it doesn't. That was nine sixty-three, something along that.
It's not your piece, or is it?
It's not your piece, or is it? It's not your piece, yeah.
I'm not sure exactly.
There's a significant part of Park, and then I'm not sure what Park looked like. So he really hopes that it will go through, but he can't extend it, he said.
Machinery, equipment, furniture, trucks, what, how much?
We, I do have, I was planning to present to the JEDZ board when they ended the meeting here, they changed it last minute to Newark, and I couldn't make it. I was going to give them a presentation, I've been working with Don Copley regarding some needed equipment to serve the developments and thus the township. So I plan to present that to the JEDZ boards, just like they paid for the trucks and various other items, so we can get them to expend the funds there. It will be a big cost to us, but not that the board can decide if we want to purchase it out of pocket, and I can provide you, you and the board, with a list of those items.
So is Madam President appropriate? So is that something you're looking to do after receiving direction from the board of trustees to pursue that goal?
Yes, we already, I already talked to the board before about that, and I believe they'd be okay to present it to the JEDZ. It's not finalized until, I think, the board action, but we can go back in a minute. But yes, I do inform the board and keep them abreast of the things.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anything else on machinery, equipment?
I think technology here, I think it'd be good, live streaming, whatever that costs. Are we still doing that? Can we get moving on that?
If the board directs us to come up with some options and get costs, et cetera, we'll take a look at that. Right now, we are, I think, one of the next items on the work session is the security cameras for the township halls, so that's where we're currently focused as far as additional IT enhancements.
I think we could focus in many areas, and I think that should be one. I would make the motion to direct Mr. Vance to pursue the live streaming archive and other things.
Right, and Madam President, the agenda request is a little later on the agenda.
I'll make that request now. Not for the future. We need to get moving, it's going to be in July, we're not fulfilling our promises and transparent. I should not have to continue to order posting.
Ms. Barry, do you have anything else?
Yeah, let's go with the Taylor Road project, is that done? The Taylor Road project.
I'm sorry, what did?
The Taylor Road project.
I think that was closed out, wasn't it, John?
The RPG Road project? What do you have, the estimates?
The three to three point five, it's a little less right now, the cost of increasing.
But it'll be two hundred and sixty thousand here.
Two forty, two sixty, yeah. Well, the interest rates are going up, so I'm not sure what to say, and the bonds will be.
I was thinking about putting in at two hundred and sixty, just to be on the safe side.
And there's a million dollar stopgap from the commissioners too, and I think their current estimates are, I think they're at a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, so we've got a little bit more cushion.
Pike Street? I have a million in here right now, but.
Well, it's still in the works. I know it's eighty-thirty, so we're in the process of submitting.
And Madam President, if that project gets funded, in the next step, consideration by the board of trustees is a preliminary application, which once again is a preliminary pursuit of ideally an invitation to submit a final application, if that is the intent of the board of trustees. But those funds aren't going to come into play until 2027, 2028, as far as we know currently.
Well, I did see the latest estimate that was just sent. I am a little concerned with Mr. Lozier in his presentation. The cost for five to six million would possibly be about a million, now the cost is eight point two. a million, now the cost is 8.2 million, would us be about 1.75 million, and it is in the 820, 730, so we're not depending on this engineering in that, so I, I've got concerns about the scope of this project and the cost, where it's going to, just as Risen indicated, the interconnectivity, so I think that should be a discussion, maybe workshop with the public and the trustees to discuss what we're doing, and I saw an email from Mr. Lozier about a application of Morpsy to apply for the funding, is that going to be decided by the board? Because it looked like it was just going to be submitted without more approval.
There is a form that we as a board have to commit to, to say that we give him permission to submit the application.
And that's, Madam President, that's July, it, it's currently proposed.
And then I did have one question on that, who approved putting Pike Street back on the federal aid system? I don't think that was a board decision.
Madam President, I can, I can, Pike Street was previously on the national register, so.
It wasn't.
It was, so it was actually, it's, well, it's actually putting it back to where it was based upon my conversations with Mr. Lozier.
That's what I'm saying, so who decided to put it back on?
My understanding, this project is, we're receiving the assistance of the Licking County TID, and so within the dynamics of the pursuit of Pike Street, that was a qualification that we needed to adhere to, and we got the assistance of Mr. Lozier.
But again, he didn't make the decision, who approved putting that back on?
No, it's, it's my understanding, Mr. Lozier pursued putting that back on.
Without any board decision?
I believe that that was started by the previous project, I was done, John Karlov reported on that for a year ago, that they had started to file that to become a.
So they, the board approved putting that back on the register?
I would have to go back a few minutes, but that was done by the previous board.
Can you pull me minutes? Because there should be a simple answer of, if, if we don't know, I mean, is it appropriate? Is it, you know?
Well, I, I would, as a staff member, I was thinking it was as simple as it used to be on, somebody took it off, my goodness, we got to get it back on.
Well, we used to buy a truck, it doesn't mean each year we could just buy another truck, it's, each action needs.
The problem was that it, the problem was removed, I guess, when they did the 310 change, the 310 project, maybe moved it for whatever reason, from what I understand, because it's historical highway.
Yes, the national.
The national historical highway, so putting it back on, wherever you see where there's a problem.
Was it removed in the air? Did they remove it in the air like they shouldn't have removed?
Williams explained to me over a year ago, he forgot.
I know, we didn't ask for it, but.
I, I heard that it was, it was removed to get additional mileage on the roads, but my concern is that things be done properly, and it should be a board vote to add roads, take roads off, and if that wasn't done by the previous board, it should have been done by this board, and you don't know the answer to it, and Mr. Key, who's handling, doesn't know the answer to it, that's concerning.
And does it cost?
I'm sorry?
Does it cost?
It does not cost to put it back on, not at all.
Didn't they mention that it has to be on there in order to receive federal funds?
Correct. That's correct.
So we lose opportunities if it's not a recognized.
Correct.
But again, there should be a board decision, not just someone saying, yeah, put the road on, because then can someone take the road off?
There was a project that was a little forward before we took our seats, and it was the Pike Street project, and that's why we continued on with that project, and it already works, and in order for it to get funding for that, we had to put it back on the, we didn't know.
We weren't getting federal funding.
We didn't know it was on there, so when we went to investigate the road and to see how we get funding without having to call of the historical list there of roads, in order for Morpsy to fund it through the federal funds, we would have to get it back on.
How did we not know it's off?
And it doesn't cost us anything.
Prior board was trying to get it back on.
I'm sorry?
How did we not know it was off, like the prior board, it was just that, was trying to get it on?
I didn't know the prior board was trying to get it on.
How do you?
I'm, I'm just saying that decisions have to be made by the board, not just.
Are you against rules?
Yeah.
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm. What's the issue with that? I still get your issue with that.
Doing it proper, just like the application of Morpsy, is that, that should be a board decision, that.
It's a lot of.
Rules and laws.
So, but am I correct in that the Pike Street wouldn't start until 2027?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
How about the pavement management projections?
Those, that if we continue to do ongoing, I forget the total cost of that, but they finished their evaluation right now, I believe they've invoiced probably about half, but you've got the full contract amount, I think it's 15,000 for the, for the two years total, and they should have deliverables by Friday, indicating what, what they recommend, the conditions of a road, by the township uses them, and at one, the previous meeting I was there, they had an entire copperance plan of road maintenance and various things to, to maintain them at the lowest cost of possible, so once I get those, I'll forward that to the board, and then we can make a decision, the paving is a little late, I wanted to get the pavement management moving a couple months earlier, but it was delayed getting approved, so I know there's price increases coming up too, so that, that's going to hurt us with whatever pavement we're going to do.
Okay.
I, I saw an estimate, I'm not sure who requested it, for Pike Street to pave that, so.
By what?
From Shelley Company.
I didn't know where that came from either.
Is this, we, and I'm just, for clarification, are we talking about paving at this point in time, or are we still concentrating on?
It's in the budget, but I saw an estimate from Shelley Company for Pike Street for the 300 or 3,800 feet, or 84,000.
I got it, I requested, that's why I forwarded it on, I'm not aware where.
So nobody knows where that came from?
Well, the, the condition of Pike Street has been discussed, Don Copley has communicated to us that it's in terrible shape, and we, we communicated to Don Copley it's going to be 2027 or 2028 before this grant, if it gets the support of the board of trustees, it's going to come into play.
That's what I'm.
So imagine if, if, if somebody was investigating the cost associated with improvements between now and then, it would be street department related.
Mr. Copley, did you request that?
I did, I did.
Oh, you did? Okay.
I didn't know, I got the email, I have a copy of it.
Okay, well, I'll forward it to you, and I appreciate it, we're trying to determine who did it.
We, we figured you did.
That's kind of what I figured too.
It would, it would, and that's what I mean about the lack of communication between the.
Julie, what's your next thing on your agenda?
Technology with the live streaming and securing cameras, would it be safe to just put in 25, 30,000, just as a placeholder for 2023, or are we trying to? I'm scared to ask if it would actually get it done this year, but.
No, we don't have the question yet. I, I would say that, I hate to guess, but it would be multiple thousand at the most, I would think.
So 20 or?
No, I, I don't know, I have no idea, but it, I believe, I believe, my, my opinion is, is, you know, what the county is seeking is more in the hundreds of thousands of dollars as opposed to whether or not we're going to budget for cameras, I could be completely wrong, but.
I think they're looking more top level than not the individual sort of.
Right.
Maintenance, the county, for, for the certificate of investment resources, so you don't want to, I don't, I don't believe you want to file a very detailed one, because if you make any changes in those lower levels, you got to submit changes there, do top level, and then you can make those changes below with this.
For budgeting purposes, I'm just going to put it in by my, and then it sums up to each.
How much did you put in there, Julie?
I didn't put any in there right now.
I would say 25.
I want just the 25,000, just to be on the safe side, but I'm sure you could go up to 100,000.
Because if we do a server, or if we do anything like that.
I'll put 25,000. Any ideas if we're to hire for record storage, retention, destruction kind of thing?
We're going to do an attempt, hire to take care of the backlog of the records retention?
These, my, my, just, my understanding of the process is, is different than, you know, questions would be, that, it's more of a, do you see any significant increase or reduction from your existing general fund budget, and if, you know, you're going to build a new building, or, you know, anything, once again, it's in the, in the much more significant, it's not a line item request from the county at this point in time, because the township hasn't gone through its budget process yet, it's more of a foundation.
It's not, but to have it more accurate and for planning purposes for the five-year projections, it is nice to have it in there, and a lot of little things add up to be big.
Okay.
So.
And it's good to have the discussion.
It's good for the discussion, if, if we had that information, I, I'm just, I wish we could have been more prepared for some of these questions.
I emailed this out last week, everybody had the spreadsheet, and I asked everybody to email me back with comments.
And we asked for comments, so we didn't know you were going to discuss that budget for somebody to get hired to come in and clean that.
It's all us, it's not.
Comments, we thought it was comments on the process, we thought that, that, you know, it was, you were comfortable with the process. We didn't realize it was, it was budgetary request for 2023.
Well, this is the budget, so anything we want to put in the budget.
Do you have anything on that?
I just.
Did you, Mr. Vance, or maybe Mr. Johnson?
No, I mean, everything I learned, we shredded for under five grand.
Well, the last I talked to Ms. Brown, was she inventoried half of it.
There's more than half inventory, Mark, would you like me to explain that, I'm right there, I can do it.
But, but I'm just saying that we got to go through it, so I think we, we should deal with it, but as far as the budgeting, there's variables left, books that were just atrocious.
Okay.
So we're trying to deal with this, and I think that's why we need the discussion.
I don't think it looks like.
Okay, so is there a budget for that?
I can put 5,000 in just for money.
Okay, thank you.
Any new jets that are going to possibly bring in more income in 2023?
We have no idea right now.
Well, the jet tool increase with the TPA, possibly there'll be a change from maybe the jet to a pilot payment to FedEx and Skanel, I'm not sure where that, that negotiation's at, they are still pursuing a second building, so it might, if they weren't included in jet seven, I'd be possibly looking at a separate jet with a different partner, because we could lower our jet costs, instead of 20% to Ralsburg, we could do 5% with another partner, 5, 6%, so that could be something we could count for.
Could you give me estimates for that?
It would, it would really depend on how many employees, I mean, you get Amazon, the JZ, we're getting 1.2 million, and other ones we're getting 90,000, 10,000, it just, you know, if they were all like Amazon, four to 5,000 employees, we would get quite a bit, but they're not that.
I think that's all I have right now, that gives me a chance to light anything.
Thank you. The county's labor attorney has provided forms to allow the employees to assist in the creation of job descriptions for city to each professional position, provided by the trustees, so we emailed those out, so everybody got those. Mr. Vance, you have anything?
We were just seeking, you know, informal direction from the board of trustees at this point in time, would you like us to continue these pursuits, utilizing the forms that were provided by the labor attorney, so that employees can, you know, put forth their proposals associated with their job responsibilities for trustee, board of trustees consideration in the near future, in the next couple months.
I'm confused by the question, we have the forms, you sent it to employees to fill out, but you're asking if we should continue?
My understanding, my understanding is we received the forms, and we sent the forms to this board of trustees to get your feedback as to whether or not we're headed in the right direction, yeah, would you like us to continue to work with the employees and create up-to-date job descriptions?
Yes.
Okay, that's good, thank you. The trustees had discussed installing security cameras in the township hall during the May 17, 2022 regular meeting and work session, Mr. Vance has since met with the two commercial security camera contractors, and is awaiting related security camera proposal for the trustees to consider in July.
Correct, and I, I got one quote in today, I believe, I got one quote in today, I haven't taken a look at it, I expect another quote, and I, I could get a third quote as well, I'm pretty confident at this point in time, I can get that information, and I can direct it to your July work session, if you have no objection.
Has, I think, one of those quotes been from our existing security contractor, Rob Lutons of SLS?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you forward them to me, please?
I haven't looked at it specifically.
Once you do.
I can't hear you.
Once you do, could you forward me the quotes too?
Yes, it, the, the quotes are going to be for discussion at a work session, would you like all three at one time prior to that discussion?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Is there a reason you can't forward the quotes as you get them, so we have time to review them?
Well, I mean, usually you put a product together before you send it for investigation, if, if you would, yes, would you like the individual quotes?
As you see, I'm busy.
Okay.
I'll turn the meeting over to trustee Evans regarding the record retention for the video retention schedule, but it's been applied to you.
Okay, one of the items, thank you for. But no, my, want to have a discussion of when we're going to deal with the records retention, issues in adding that video security, because as it stands right now, the garage security system overrides press later month, and we should have that as a policy that those records only need to be retained 15 days, 20 days, per what the prosecutor indicated, I spoke to Ms. Brown before about that, and she said it would have to go to the Record Retention Committee, that whole process, so I want to know, has that been initiated? Where are we at? And then piggybacking on that, when we're going to deal with that, the audit said we're deficient in our Records Retention Committee not meeting, these are things that, you know, that I think we need to keep up on, and I'm not sure, you're usually familiar with the Records Retention Committee, I mean, when's the last time we met or?
We have met, committee that met.
We have in the past, I don't know how long it's been, but over here 14 years.
In the past, the committee only met when we had something changed on the record schedule, I'm not sure when it got changed, where they're supposed to meet every year, the past, we only met with trustee Karlov, because he was president of the board, Walter Rogers was a fiscal officer, and then we were going to add Martha Dakota with West looking joint, I mean, West looking historical society, but we've only met in the past when we actually had an RC2 form that impacted.
Because I don't know, it was one of the items in the audit report that we're deficient on, that we received an audit report a while ago, so I want to know, has there been any action on that, or if not, why, and if we haven't, can we, Mr. Vance should be very familiar with his work with other entities, records retention committees, if he could take that by himself.
The committee only happens to meet once a year, and the year's not up yet.
Correct.
So if Mr. Vance could take that, and, I mean, that should be pretty simple to get going and be complying with the video, then again, also deal with that, so then we can take back our conference room instead of having to meet up here all the time.
And Madam President, we, we'd be pleased at the staff level to put together some proposals, a draft game plan for your consideration, and we can put it forth at the July work session for direction.
I don't think you have to go that far, I've worked with Travis Johnson, he's over me, and I told him as soon as I got, the minutes caught up in one of the projects I was working on with him, that I would start working back in the room, it's just because of last year, so with all the stuff that kept going on with COVID and everything, it got put on hold.
Right.
You don't have to do a big production effort, the room has been immaterial, I mean, this process, I know exactly what to do with record retention, I was in the OTA magazine about records retention, Mr. Evans, I know what I'm doing back there.
Mrs. Brown, please.
We don't need a whole big deal vague on it, I've worked with trustee Johnson, we got to play together.
Mrs. Brown, this has been like this for over five years, this was here before Mr. Samson was here.
Mr. Singleton did not know all the work that's been put into that program, it's not a simple task to just. Mr. Singleton did not know all the work that's been put into that room. It's not a simple task to just go through all the records from day one of the township. Back to when they had school records involved, to the ancient hundreds, Martha Dakota's been very involved in those records back there.
And if we would have been complying with the yearly requirement, I think that would have been the case, but my concern is that we're not complying right now. And does the board want me to, we're talking about purchase policies, purchase hard drives to pull that two terabyte hard drive each month to retain?
You were given a hard drive to pull it off by me to pull it off when you were open and you asked for that.
It's one terabyte USB drive.
Madam, Madam President, we're, we're simply going to put together a report. We'll state, we have expertise in place. We have historical, we have historical practices. I would suggest we put a, a report in place, direct it to the Board of Trustees, indicate what we're doing, what we're going to continue to do. And then if the Board of Trustees has any additional discussion, you have public meetings that you could bring up the topic again.
Well, what I'd like to know right now, do you want me to continue just letting it overwrite, destroying those records? Or begin pulling those off? It'll be two terabytes each month until that's, that's done. It's been overriding for years.
I didn't.
So every month, 30 days, or even interesting, we should go to 15. Well, the record, the prosecutor said a records policy should state a shorter time period so that if, if there's a records request, like I did to fill that one, I could pull it off to the system. But if it's longer than 15 days, 30 days, it will just automatically overwrite. Right now, we don't have a policy, so when it destroys it at 30 days, we're actually destroying records without the proper policy or authority to do that. So does this board want me to continue letting that overwrite?
When, when Mr. Evans offered me, I gave him a one terabyte or a two terabyte hard drive, or flash drive, I believe, and he was going to start doing that until we could work this out. When he was the president and he didn't call records retention meeting then. But I understood he was going to be pulling them off and we were going to be saving them until I could finish working with Corinne down at Licking County Records Retention and we could work as a board to fix the policy. So when I talked with Mr. Vance, he's working on getting some security cameras for the township. So when we know how long they're going to hold it, we can have a meeting with Julie and you, and if we want to get Martha involved, or you and I talked about maybe somebody else that does Historical Society, we can meet, we can update the RC2 form. I can send it over to Historical Society like it's done in the past. And then it can come back and be approved and will abide by whatever the security hard drive is allowing. So yes, Martha's correct. Until you fix that, you need to be pulling it off with that flash drive and saving it on a hard drive.
You, you cannot, the flash drive only holds half that system capacity. You'd have to have another medium to, to put it to, to keep storing it every, two terabytes every month, two ter, so that, that wasn't system. And I had talked to you about doing the records retention updating, and that's what you said you were working on.
And I reached out to Corinne Johnson and I got you the information back by email and I shared it with the full board back when you asked for it.
Hey, is there an online storage that you could do instead?
I don't know.
That would, would you pay for it?
Maybe we can connect it to it. That was another thing, the IT, I have no contact with the IT company.
Maybe you can throw it up through the township or road guys, go have a carbon act backup. Maybe that's what we're, I don't know. I've never been involved in what's going on.
What I'm saying, either we need to quickly update the, the records retention policy to just allow it to, to do that or physically get large hard drives and pull it off. I want to know what the board want me to do. Allow it to continue to overwrite until we correct it, which is destroying records? Or start pulling it off or let it purchase hard drives?
I didn't realize you had any direct responsibilities as a trustee for records retention. So I would, I would recommend, Madam President, that anything trustee Evans is currently doing associated with maintaining our records in good order, he communicate those things specifically to us so that we can contact the appropriate resources to make sure that those responsibilities are transferred.
This board and the township has been notified, Mr. Vance. There was no action before, and that's why I'm asking for now. We can't even get a straight decision. Do you, do you want me to procure hard drives to pull that off? Or does this board want it to continually override as it has? That is the simple answer.
How much is a one terabyte flash drive?
One terabyte is 15 days.
You need to find out how much a hard drive we, we need every 15 days to keep it on.
No, with a flash drive, how much do they hold? You say pull a flash drive out of it, right?
Oh, it was already, that, the one I gave him was already here. I didn't buy.
There's one terabyte, it's a two terabyte system.
How much is a terabyte?
30 days.
I mean, he's saying is until the policy's passed, you're going to have to be able to hold probably two terabytes of hard drive every 15 days.
How much is a flash? Every 30 days.
I would buy a one, two terabyte to pull it off of and then a bigger hard drive to save it to. And you're blocking out a lot, a lot of hard drive space to save that total record.
How much is a flash drive?
I don't know.
You have any idea?
They're over a hundred dollars for two terabytes.
Two terabyte flash drive is a hundred dollars?
They're over a hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, this is the first, he's really went to this detail audit for me to be prepared.
It is not. Let's, we, we can figure this out quickly tomorrow and put forth a report and figure out how we need to proceed and, and report back at the next meeting.
Okay, Martha, I think you should.
Everybody is on the same page that we need to keep our, our records responsibly safe and in accordance with Ohio Revised Code. So that is the collective goal, it's my understanding.
Two terabyte USB flash drive on Walmart right now for 25 bucks. Okay, but that's just two, well, he's talking about every 15 days.
He has stories.
You're going to have to go with stories.
Right, what I, what I'm going to recommend, I'm going to, unless Mr. Vance has talked to, no, no.
I mean, there's other options out there. There should be a dual one on here. I mean, you could probably find it cheaper.
One, did you put it in there?
Martha, Martha. Yeah, so Ms. Malbox, I told you that you had to give me those.
Mr. Vance, I don't know if you want to continue, but one question, you dealt with Rob Levens with SOS. He's looked at the security system. Do you want to contact him and ask him what, as a security professional, what he would recommend to, the easiest way to pull that off of? Because that is able to connect to the internet, so there might be a cloud remedy. There might be something remotely unless putting, putting it through USB 2.0 and 3.0 would take forever for a month's worth of video from Pete Campbell. Just leave it on that.
Madam President, I have all the confidence that we can figure this out and, and bring back a report and options.
So until you do, just let it overwrite. Correct? Another answer?
You wouldn't even let it override, right?
Are there, is there any announcements from the trustee, or trustee office?
Wait, can I go back to nine and do the July 5 regular meeting recommendations?
Correct.
Have you a recommendation on July 5 trustee's regular meeting?
I, I think we need to hold a, um, a budget meeting that's open to the public. Unless Laura can remember if the prior trustees did anything to get that waived with the county budget commission.
What was?
I already told her earlier, I've not recalled a member doing that, so I don't have any actual.
We can, we can work with you and, Madam President, we can work with the fiscal officer and, or you requesting, do we need a, a public hearing at the next meeting? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, with regard to the budget.
Okay, well, I think, my understanding, my experience with the county budget submittals in a municipal capacity was that you quite possibly have a very brief public hearing and you just provide the foundation of your anticipated next year's budget and receive any comment. And we will clarify if that is still the practice or is a practice in Licking County as well, and we will assist the fiscal officer any way we can.
It has to be published 10 days prior to the July 5 meeting, so we're right up on that date.
And is it due July 20th?
I have to submit it, um, July 20th, but you guys have to approve it by July 15th.
Right, well, Madam President, that is, I mean, you do have the ability to coordinate with your, your peers at the county level and see what their expectations are and then let us know how we can help you. It, it sounds like.
I just wanted to make sure that we follow the law, that the public hearing is held when it should be and everything is published when it should be.
Okay, and this is, right, it's related to the budget, it's related to the fiscal officer, and anything we can do to help you, just let us know.
What I think she's concerned about is that we as a board, she doesn't schedule these meetings, we as a board schedule the meetings. So she wants to ensure that we schedule the public hearings within the, before publishing.
Right, yeah, I got that. I mean, she just needs to tell us what kind of assistance we can provide her, and we absolutely will. She needs to clarify as the fiscal officer, in my professional estimation, what the responsibilities of Etna Township are in working with the county as far as their 2023 budgetary requests. So once the fiscal officer confirms that, just ask how we can, you know, ask us, you know, how we can be of assistance and we will be of assistance.
Sure, we got it.
So if we need to, go ahead, Madam.
Wait, so we just need to make sure that we publicly announce the meeting in 10 days.
Of July 15th.
So where is July 5?
Well, no, actually, it's 10 days prior to the hearing, so that would be, July 5th has to be the hearing, so it would be 10 days prior to that. But.
So we're in 20 months today, so.
Yeah, so what you did tonight was help me go through the budget already.
Good.
So that has to be, um, open and available to the public. Do they come in and question or make suggestions? And, but I was asking basically with Laura because I didn't know if the prior board had gone to the budget commission, the county budget commission, to get it waived, to get this process, this part of it waived.
You would have to talk to Walter Rogers. I've been involved in that here. Well, I just know you've never put it in the paper or helped a public hearing.
But if it was waived, won't we have that in the minutes?
Mr. Evans, I don't know. I don't know. You would have to talk to Walter Rogers.
I, I can call the county budget commission if it's waived. It's okay.
Right, and Madam President, this is a conversation, a conversation that simply needs to take place between the fiscal officer and her peers at the county. And then she can provide us, you know, with direction on how to support her.
So right now, let's just plan that we have to have a public hearing and it needs to be published by, what, July 25th?
Okay, and, and Madam President, we just need a copy of the public hearing notice from the fiscal officer and we will absolutely get it published.
The one you sent me earlier, the Laura will work. If you just change it a little bit.
Okay. So we got one already, not as standard.
Is it all items?
That's not my hope. I was just trying to get that on July 5 meeting.
And then what I am requesting is, I requested today for that meeting, food truck approval at the park.
Wait, are we under announcement for trustee comments?
No, we're, we're. On July 5.
July 5 regular meeting recommendations. Do you want to hear the recommendations? Uh, the food truck approval at the park for discussion. Again, I think it, it serves the community. It'll bring people to the park and I believe, let's talk to Mr. Singleton about it, the zoning. We, we could, uh, do it as a township and have sponsored events and that. If we do have to have like a charity sponsor, I would suggest using West Lookin Historical Society. They're right there if you come over. If we have to charge some kind of fee for it, maybe that could go to them. But it's about serving the community, more food office. I would really recommend doing that. I, I think we need a discussion about the Rousberg annexation inquiries outside the annexation agreement. I haven't heard anything from that since our attorney was told not to come here. We're talking about the live streaming. We're kind of looking at that. The NCA, intergovernmental agreement. We need to address that. Again, Mr. McKee, you told our attorney he was going to come here unilaterally, not to come here. We need to have a discussion as a board on this agreement, so I'm not sure if you're planning a special meeting or what, but at minimum it should be on July 5. We're, we're going to lose out on possible funding if it goes into August, I was told, or it will be more complicated. What else was there?
NCA, it was?
The NCA, intergovernmental agreement. That's what Kip Walter was, could have come here at that last meeting when Mr. P took control. She told him not to come.
Madam President, and, and it, it's appropriate when your, you know, accurate information is not coming forth at any point in time that you would like to, to correct it, you can. Just for the record, my understanding is trustee Evans invited the attorney to come to the public meeting that night. The other trustees were not involved. We set up an informational meeting for the 24th so that we could put it on a near future agenda thereafter as necessary. So you are committed to moving forward with addressing the situations that trustee Evans refers to. And I think if we're going to team build in, in Etna Township, we have to communicate with respect. We have to attempt to create allies for common goals. And obviously, everybody in this meeting room this evening wants the best for Etna Township, wants Etna Township to be successful. So any insinuation of conspiracies or anybody out to take over the world is just not positive, it's not productive. So that, that's.
This is incorrect, especially if someone that doesn't communicate that. However, Kip, Kip Walters said, Mr. P told me not to come. And I was, I did apprise the board about the intention and the agreement and all that, so that is at the fault. But we do need to address that again.
We are moving forward with that, yes.
Okay, uh, grants, I'd like to put that on there because are we applying for any? We missed out on quite a few. That, that's very important. Employee handbook provision update, again, no draft on that, but we talked about that. Talked about that. I'd like to have a discussion on the update of the, uh, the light trespass at the Blue Monkey Hotel, the Source One. I'm getting no information on that. I think we need to start forcing that, so I'd like to have a discussion with that. And then also the West Lookin Falcon, a petition beyond the agenda for discussion. It's, it's a debunked corporation now. I think, uh, the last minutes I got for appointees for 2016, so that would mean their terms expired. And I, I think we have to properly go through those, uh, channels to get that set up with our appointees and determine what we're going to do with those. They're going to determine what they're going to do with those funds, but I, I would say that we should not continue funding it. And then those are the items I suggested.
Is there any announcement or trustee comments?
Uh, yes, I'd just like to say that the West Lookin Historical Society is looking for volunteers for their protest with a street fair booth. So if anybody's interested, you can get in touch with me for your information. It's a good organization. It's good to preserve the past but also promote it. So they're going to be having a new thing, a video, um, system there to record people's memories of the area and that. So it, it should be pretty interesting. So again, anybody that's interested in, in doing that, please contact myself. And one thing I do want to say is, I'm really, I continue to be dismayed by being ignored by many in the township of requests for information, requests to work for the residents. I'm not getting any responses back in general on inquiries of important items that the residents are contacting me continuously on. That needs to stop. All I want is people to do their jobs and serve, serve the residents. So I've asked to be included in Township Communications. That was done for when we came in as a board member, for Mr. McKee and Mr. Johnson. Even every email I sent to someone, they were included because they requested it. I requested that and that is not being honored. Why? Documents are being withheld, information's being withheld. I have to come across, it, it, it's inappropriate. So I, I know, Mr. Vance, you talk about, you know, everyone was communicate to the best of the residents and that. Well, those are words, actions differ. I, I still don't get the requested information from you.
That's.
Copy, I, I'm speaking now, Mr. Vance.
Okay.
And, uh, that needs to end. I mean, we all are equal. We all serve the residents. And for me not to know about many of these issues because it's not being shared is inappropriate. So all I ask again is just everybody follow the law, follow the rules and do their job for the residents of the township. That's all. That's all.
I would just say, if you're looking to be successful at whatever you do, whoever you are, there's a right way to go about things, and there's a wrong way to go about things. And generally, people respond to be, respond well to be treated, being treated with respect, being, you know, having their positions. That's just, that's enough. Unsubstantiated statements just do a lot of damage. And it seems that unsubstantiated statements are made on a regular basis. And they're not, you know, doing what we're trying to collectively accomplish, anything positive right now.
Mr. Vance, I could show you email, not your email, let's see.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Sure.